... just technically in your district, but I have a good answer for it. I need probably you to provide the answer to that.
You're right.
I mean, I already worked out the issue.
Tony, you want me to go first?
Uh, Tony, tell me when you're ready.
I give you all the information, you can do the answer if you want.
Vice Chair and Commissioners, good morning. We have a short session, hopefully a short session this morning, but we have two things to cover. One is the decision packages that are still left on the table to consider for 2021. And the staff has gone through, leadership team, budget team has gone through what started out as a very thick stack of decision packages and made several distillations over the last month and a half or so. But what is left are items that are so paramount to the organization that we just, we haven't figured out a way to cut them. So we want to just go over those, Lorian and then accompanying staff who are here today want to go over and talk about those issues, why they're so essential to the county and the struggle that we've had in trying to jettison them for the 2021 year. That's the first thing we'd like to go through. And though Lorian gave you the 169 pages, the critical pages are pages one and two. All of the explanation and justifications follow that. So if you really want to probe into a particular item or two, you can get into the documents. And then the second thing, we had promised even pre-COVID, was to come up with a comprehensive list of community types of funding that we historically have done and that we are currently doing and we are going to have to consider for next year. This discussion came about at the end of 2019 when we were being approached by a number of nonprofits and a number of groups who were requesting funding. And at that time, we'd made the decision just to bring it back to you comprehensively so you could have a good look at it now with COVID and the challenges in the budget for next year. I think it's even more germane that we take a look at those kinds of fundings today. So decision packages first, community funding second. And Lorian, did I forget anything or is that... All right, we'll turn the meeting over to Lorian then, and away we go.
Good morning. We'll be starting with the sheriff airplane replacement, and Tanya Cole's going to introduce it.
All right, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I'm here this morning very quickly to present on one decision package we have in the Division of Admin Services, which is in the Fleet Department. That's a request for the sheriff's airplane replacement. And as part of fleet charges, the sheriff office has been paying set aside for the airplane replacement for several years. So via WebEx, we have Penny Poland, Fleet Manager, available. But right now, I'm going to turn this over to Sheriff Easter, who's going to be speaking on this request.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you taking the time today to consider the sale of the aircraft and the buying of a new one. In 2011, we did a study that was requested in reference to the airplane itself and why the airplane was so critical to our operations. In 14, we were asked to do that again. Justification was made as to why we have the airplane and how it saves us money along with the critical need for it. And so Tanya alluded to the fact that out of our budget, we pay set aside money for engine replacement and for the possibility of replacing the airplane. There's about a million dollars setting there. And it's come to the point now where if we're going to make any money at all on the sale of our aircraft, it has to be done fairly soon because engines need to be replaced and those type of things, and it's an aging aircraft. And so our estimates look at the million dollars and then what we believe the sale of the airplane would be, and we could buy an updated airplane that's more fuel efficient, those type of things. I have brought Dr. Lay with me today. He is our head pilot, and he can go over some of those specifics if you have any questions on those. So, Dr. Lay?
Basically, I'm here just to answer questions, but just as a brief overview on the aircraft, you really couldn't find an aircraft any better than what we have to do your mission. However, we have a couple of issues with it. Number one, it's 45 years old, and it's frankly wearing out. Maintenance has become a real issue, very difficult to get maintenance on it. Parts are almost all rebuilt and do not last. The other main issue is training. There's only one place left in the country that we can get training, and quite frankly, it's not very good. So that's kind of what's prompted the recommendation to go to a new aircraft. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you have.
Doctor, is the training at Flight Safety here in Wichita?
No, sir, it's not. It's an organization called SimCom. It's in Orlando, Florida.
Right.
The simulator that they use is the same simulator that I've trained in for 14 years. And needless to say, it's wearing out too.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how many people does this plane hold?
Okay, we can actually have seven onboard, sir. That'd be three crew and four inmates. We normally only carry three inmates at a time.
So the three crew is two pilots and a security person?
That is affirmative, sir.
Is it a twin-engine?
Yes, sir. It's a twin-engine, it's called a Commander, it's a 690A, a twin-engine turboprop, very efficient. But it's out of production for many years, and we just can't get parts.
And how long is the typical flights? I mean...
Typical flights, I would say, are probably two, two-and-a-half hours. Yesterday, we went to Las Vegas, we were in the air over seven hours.
So it's good enough to go over the mountains, huh?
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
How many flights do you make per year?
I'll give you an hour, the actual number of flights I don't have. We used to fly about 50 hours a month. Needless to say, recently, it's been zero. I would say we're probably going to be flying 25 to 30 hours per month. That's an estimate.
Can this plane wait one more year, considering the circumstances?
It can, that's your decision, yes, ma'am.
That's all my questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I remember a couple of years back, I was interested in this very much, and I asked a lot of questions, and I became very satisfied that this is a really good program for Central County. I want to say thank you for what you do, and I'm glad we actually have this as a way to move our inmates around that need to be moved across state lines especially. This has been a great solution for Central County. I think it's great that we do this, but I am curious, what type of airplane are you having eyes on that you'd like to see us... That was a process we're going to follow to get that aircraft. Are we going to do a... How could we do our sheriff's vehicles? Are we going to look out and do a kind of a bid type of thing? What's the process we're going to use to try to find the new plane, and what are we looking for?
Okay, my opinion is, is what you should be looking for is a twin-engine turboprop. I think jets will be out of your price range, and in addition to that, you have to have a fairly long field, and we do operate out of 3,000-foot fields. I think right now, what you're probably looking at is one of the King Air series. They are made in Wichita. You can get them serviced anyplace in the country, and there are multiple places to get training for insurance.
Very good, that's what I was wondering as well. All right. Thank you for the presentation, and I think this is a good thing for us to figure out, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have a question about the funding of this, so who, Lorian, would it be yours? So with the set-aside fund, how much money is in there today that we could use to fly?
I heard from Penny Poland this morning, and they currently have $865,000. By the end of 2020, she believes they'll have $896,000, and mid-year next year, $936,000.
Is that just for the plane, or is that everything in the set-aside fund?
That's just for the plane.
Okay, and they estimate that we can get up to $500,000 for this?
If we sell it shortly, yes.
Okay, so we're right in that ballpark. Okay, well, this makes total sense then, if we have the funding to do it. And how many years have we been setting aside? That's an awful lot of money, so this must have been something we've been anticipating for a very long time. Do you have an estimate, like 10 years?
I believe Penny's on the line, if she can...
I'm sorry, I'm having problems hearing. What was the question?
How long have we been setting aside money for this aircraft to acquire that $800,000?
Tony, you might repeat it. Penny, how long have we been setting aside the funds for the aircraft?
23 years.
I think, yeah, my microphone wasn't close enough. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, 23, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. And we can buy a new... Is it a new plane or a used plane, or what are we looking for for this million and a half dollars? Used aircraft? Okay, and you can get a used aircraft like you're looking for for a million and a half dollars? Very good, well, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Sheriff, to answer the Vice Chair's question, which was a good question, I think we talked about it, can you talk about the timing of this? The ramifications if we defer a year and maybe what we lose on the value of the sale just to maybe...
Yeah, we will lose value, and those engines are due to be replaced, which, how much are the engines, Dr. Lay?
I would estimate it'd be about $800,000 to reverse.
And so, and that's the time crunch we're running against, is replacing the engines on an aircraft that is very old. And again, with insurance on it, going up with, we're training two pilots with parts for it, it's kind of a crunch time on time to purchase this aircraft fairly soon and to sell our aircraft.
Okay, Commissioner? No? Are you looking for motions, Mr. Chairman, on each item?
No, I don't think so. I think we're all...
I don't know that we need necessarily a motion. I think as we plow through these, you guys can ask questions. I think at the end of it, when we come back, just affirmation that you all think that this is legitimate, or if there's something you want to cut or alter or modify.
And I apologize for being a few minutes later. I assume that we're going to see these, and then we can have Lindsey's in the... If this fits within our capital budget right now versus we're at the limit, we're too high, too low, so is that the plan?
Yes.
Good.
So if I could just follow up on that, and now I owe Tony a drink. I think what we need from you to know, or today, is to know if you need additional information, if you have strong support one way or the other. Because what we'll do is then incorporate this into your recommended budget. This will also be part of framing the discussion that we had talked about, kind of the homework assignment. We had to think about what an acceptable level of deficit spending could be next year. And so as you hear these types of things come up, and as there are things you're interested in doing, if they are one-time expenses or if they're allowable uses of fund balance, then we'll want to have that as a consideration for that deficit spending. So we want to wait to have that conversation until after you've heard the whole picture, which is what you'll have between those base budgets you heard about during your budget reviews, plus the decision package review today.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. So Sheriff, you were going to address the question, clarify the question like Commissioner Cruz had about urgency of the difference between now and maybe a year from now? Yeah, and that's what I would answer to earlier, sir. Oh, yeah, okay. Commissioner Hal, sorry.
I do have one other question, and this might be for Lindsey as well. So the logistics of this, we're going to need to purchase an airplane before we sell the old airplane. We don't know the sale price until we sell it, because that's going to also be some purple wave, or however we're going to sell that airplane, I don't know the process there. Are we going to use some reserve funds to complete the deal? And if we run a little bit short on cash, what's the plan to cover the shortfall?
So we would make this acquisition actually out of the Fleet Fund, which is an Internal Service Fund, and that has a very robust fund balance, as you would expect, because we are collecting set aside at all times toward all future acquisition. And so as long as we have that complete within the calendar year 2021, in the same year in which we make that purchase and use that reserve, there shouldn't be an issue.
So if we decide to go forward, we probably can start this process, I assume, calendar year, January 1st, we'll begin the process of looking for a plane and...
I think as soon as you all adopt a budget in August, if this is included, then that would be the authority that purchasing would need to help the sheriff's office conduct whatever work they need to do to find the right airplane for them.
All right, great answers, thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
I think while the sheriff's got the podium, if you flip to the page two, there's other sheriff's items on there, and since sheriffs have the podium, we'll just kind of go out of order, and then we'll do the district attorney next, so.
Good morning again. Again, thank you, Dr. Lay, for being here, we appreciate that. When we presented our budget packages, our decision packages, less than a month ago, one of the ones that was sticking out there was the medical contract. We had talked about the third option of asking our current vendor, WellPath, for a one- and two-year extension. And so we have those numbers back for what the one-year extension would be and what the two-year extension would be. And then we also asked them what another mental health professional would cost, so I have all those numbers. So for one year in 2021, the proposed increase would be 5.8%. In the years past, it had been a little bit under three. They want a 5.8% increase for one year, which would be an increase of $357,685. For a second-year increase would be $378,431. So total, you're talking right at $800,000 for the two-year extension. Remember that the one-year cost was right at $1.8 million. To add a mental health professional would be an additional $81,880 a year. So if we chose to do the one-year extension with the mental health professional, the total cost would be $439,000. And then if we did the two-year extension, then it's right at $450,000 for the second year. So you're talking a total of about $859,000 for a two-year extension with the mental health professional.
Commissioner Cruz?
Where, I'm sorry, in all of these papers, which, what are we looking at here? This is the medical contract increase, it's on page 150. And the number you'll see in there is what was presented at hearings for the full contract. Okay. Sheriff, can I clarify, the numbers you just presented are for the sheriff's office only, right? That would not include...
Yeah, that's the sheriff's office only. I think Glenda is on WebEx for what their cost would be with WellPath. So can you do a Cliff Notes summary again, Sheriff, just to make sure? Yeah, absolutely. Courtesy, because we were searching for the paperwork, so thank you. So the 2021 one-year extension is a 5.8% increase of $357,685. To do a two-year increase, the second year would be $378,431. We discussed adding a mental health professional because of the amount of issues that we're having in there. That's an additional $81,880. So for the year 2021, if we choose to do the 5.8% increase plus the mental health professional, it'd be $439,556. And refresh my memory, during the budget process, we talked about a one-year, and then the question from one of our commissioners was, can we do two years because you were happy with it, and it's a better price? That, and it would get us through 20, the year 2021 for budget year 2022. I think it's a better option to do the two-year extension than the one. Plus, and that includes a health professional added, I mean, a mental health professional? It can, yes. There's, again, it adds $81,000 to the contract each year. So it would add, basically for the first year, it'd be $439,000 with the mental health professional, and then it would be roughly $450,000 the second year. Okay. Okay. Questions? Okay, and just to confirm, you're happy with the service? Yeah, we're very happy with the service. We've stayed out of the side of stuff, so, okay.
Okay, just want to remind us, so what we were talking about before, this extension opportunity was as a whole new contract, I think it was for, I believe, 10 years?
Five.
Five years. And it was a one-and-a-half million dollar...
It was 1.8 million for the first year increase. And then you would have whatever their incremental increases, traditionally, they've been around 3% a year beyond that for year two through five.
Chairman, if Glenda's online, maybe it might be good to hear from her at this point, since she's also a part of this discussion. I think her increased numbers were a bit...
They're quite a bit lower.
Less than the sheriff's. Glenda, are you on?
Glenda, you on, please?
And Sheriff, you may have to do it from your mic, I don't know that she can hear our mics, see if Glenda's on.
Glenda, are you on the air?
Okay.
Did you know where it was?
Rusty, I think, has the numbers.
Rusty, can you address it?
Yeah. Glenda was on the line, this is Chris Morales with Corrections, if you want me to go through it. Chris, can you hear me? Yes. I've got the numbers here, but if you're on the line, go ahead and, you can go through them, and if there's questions, I'll stay right here for a minute.
And again, can you tell us now what page, please?
Okay, for our one, we also requested from WellPath a one- and two-year extension, what the prices would be for the option, first option for the one-year extension, it was a 3% increase. That amounts to $15,652. For a second-year extension, they are opting to forego the increase, so it would remain the same at $15,652. Our request in the decision package is $23,000, and the reason it's the difference of about $7,500 is we're building in just a tiny bit for some of the things that we experienced this year that the contract does not cover, such as transportation by ambulance and surgeries. So our total request is $23,000, that covers juvenile detention facility and juvenile residential facility. For two years, correct, Chris? Or $23,000 each year? $23,000 each year.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Okay, I think we got it. Thank you.
Sheriff, did you not have any, is that the last item you had? I think we had other, while you're here. Okay, went over. Oh, very good, never mind.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So the items that they're breaking down is not broken down on this sheet, which makes it kind of confusing and hard to understand. Is there a way that we could like get it so that we could understand exactly what they're talking about? Because this isn't broken down.
What, which...
Well, you're saying that it's on 150, both of these departments were talking about the same thing on this sheet, but all we see is $1.6 million.
And I think that was the original response back on the RFP. That was a joint RFP that was done for Medical Services, for both sheriff and medical, or for Corrections Medical. And so what we're hearing today is the alternative to that, based on the direction that the request the commissioner's made during hearings when the sheriff presented on this. And so these numbers will be greater, they haven't been revised to reflect these updated requests. This is what was submitted by the department back in March. But yes, we can absolutely work with the sheriff's office to get a nice summary of the updated...
It would be nice, I think it's easier to understand when they're up here talking about all these different things, but we get one number on here.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and just to follow with Commissioner Cruz, I would agree, it is just a big number. Fortunately, in this case, there was just an extra $23,000 a year, which is not, but I don't know how many of the next things we're going to hear, if there's a real, a real more higher numbers that, I don't know what the rest of the presentation looks like as well, because we're just seeing this, so.
I think this is kind of an anomaly for what we're experiencing, just based on the RFP that went out, and kind of a weird situation about how to present this information to the commission. So I think the rest will be more straightforward for you.
Okay, well, and if you have something like what you just said, feel free to explain this ahead of time as they're getting ready to present, it's a little helpful for us to digest.
I think the rest of the items will be more yes, no. What the sheriff just presented was, there's a yes, no, and then there's a maybe, or an in-between, a kind of a negotiation, so that, it is, this one's different. We'll try to get you a better summary, Commissioner Cruz.
All right, thank you, respectful, appreciate. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, we had the sheriff here. We need to discuss the other decision packages that are in this first sheet for out-of-county inmate housing, current equipment cost, and the judicial courtroom. I know that, I know we talked about the judicial courtroom once before.
We weren't prepared to talk about any of that since we'd presented the information, but if there's questions still on it, I'd be more than happy to take it.
Okay, well, it was just on this summary sheet, and so I didn't know if you were intending on discussing those other items or not.
No, we didn't, because those were, the only item that I needed to come back was with answers on the one- or two-year extension. I mean, we presented, nothing's changed on those other decision packets, sir.
Very good, well, I was just wondering why we had it on this summary then.
So Commissioner, can I try and address that, just to, so the sheriff's office and the DA's office, I think, both kind of talked about some of the decision packages that they were going to bring up during their hearing discussions with you. For the others, we had asked departments to hold off and have those go through more rounds with the budget team for review and vetting, and then they came back. So the decision packages are still listed on here because they're still in play, but they have already been presented, and it's just something we don't feel like we can remove off the list, so hopefully that helps.
Okay, you know, and thank you, Lindsey, and I'm reminded, Commissioner Dennis, that at the end of the budget, kind of a roundtable, all these departments were pretty neutral to even reduction on their operating budgets, and the only ones, now my memory says, we said, well, the sheriff looks like needs some help, the DA's office and the appraiser's office, we kind of, so that's probably why you're, we're seeing that kind of order of special needs that are in those areas. I can't, there might be another one or two, but I think, my memory's starting to, so that's probably why we're there, so.
Well, and as Tom said at the beginning, we had 80 decisions, more than 80 decision packages when we started this process in March, and so certainly the number you're going to hear today is much lower. I think it was worth $18 million at that time, and so the list you can see that's still in play has been whittled down by the budget team to 7.7 million. It's just those things where we truly didn't feel like there was a way for us to make a decision without coming to you and having that policy consideration and discussion and guidance before we could say yea or nay. So that's why we're doing it a little differently than we've done it in the past this year, even knowing that we try and want to keep things as flat as possible.
Okay, thanks for, Sheriff, thanks for being around as we're getting our hands around the big picture, so thank you. Lindsey, do we need to call medical staff?
Eighty.
Okay. All right, next up.
Next up is Mr. Bennett, will be on page 155.
Thank you.
Good morning. As I discussed the last time I was here, my general presentation of budget... As I discussed the last time I was here, my general presentation of budget, over the last several years, we've tried to keep you guys apprised of what's, apprised of what's going on within the court system. We've had several changes over the last several years that have caused us to have to shuffle some of our priorities within the office. The decentralization of the dockets has been an ongoing experience, trying to make sure we can attend to that, that being one of the primary issues. We've got the Odyssey program coming up, the shift from the state's court systems, RMS, and our need to attend to that. So with that in mind, I put together, I think what I told you last time was probably the most robust request package I've made. Probably it was, because we're needing some help. But obviously, this is a different time, and the order of the day was to try to limit requests and in fact, do our best to cut our budgets. So that's, the presentation was made last time, but I did, I think Tom alluded to it earlier, Lindsay, somebody did, that we, I went ahead and I took the time I had with you all, at least kind of tell you what the state of affairs was, so that with the idea that next year I'll come back and go, you know, here's where we're at. So I'm pleased to see that there's at least a possibility that some consideration could be given. I've received communication from county manager that of the five things that were listed as priorities, I think this was tied to a question, maybe Commissioner Howell asked me last time, which is, if there was one thing you really did need, what would it be? And so, give me one minute here, I'll kind of give you the overview, and then why it is this, what's listed, I think, it was listed as priority number three, but again, that was in, back, you know, 100 years ago in March, before the world got turned on its ears. So the three, the five top priorities for the DA's office, one, additional attorneys for the trial division. You know that I've got the total package of attorneys within the office, but we've got attorneys who do care and treatment, traffic, child need to care, excuse me, juvenile offender, appeals, you start pulling all those off, and then there's, that leaves a certain number, 20, 23, 24, who do just the criminal cases. And with somewhere north of 3,500, last year was 3,700 cases filed, that's a lot of caseload for each individual attorney. Additionally, with the advent of the decentralization of the courts, the way that's done in a lot of jurisdictions is they'll assign two to three, four attorneys per judge, so that, you know, these four attorneys are assigned to that judge, and that's where they go every day. For that to work, in my experience in talking to other jurisdictions, you need three to four lawyers per judge for that really to be feasible. I have somewhere in the neighborhood of about two lawyers per judge, with the 10 criminal judges that we appear in front of. So it's been difficult for me to accommodate. So the idea was, little by little, we'll start adding attorneys so that we could maybe, at least put ourselves in a position to be able to do that. That's what priority number one was. Well, if you add attorneys, you're going to need support staff to support those functions, that was priority number two, the admin assists. I'll skip three, because that's really where I'm going to land here. The fourth and fifth, one was one extra lawyer in the appellate division. We have attorneys who appear in front of this Court of Appeals, Supreme Court, every year, handle all of the appeals that come. And people, I'm not sure everybody understands, is maybe aware of this, but everybody who comes through the court system, if they're convicted, gets a chance to appeal. Even if they plead guilty, they have a right to certain appeals. Now, the ones who plead guilty, those are routinely summarily dismissed because accept responsibility. But even so, someone has to write the brief, write the response, you know, it takes time. So I've asked my chief of our appeals division over the years, let me know when you're getting to the point where you're going to need help. And he's told me the last several years, we're getting there, we're getting there. And he said, you know, it's time to pull the trigger, which is why it was added, understanding this is not the right year for that now, but that's why number four was there. And then number five was expert witness fees. We don't really have a line item for expert witnesses, we've always just managed to pay for it out of our budget, but we get to the point where, you know, in this world of our numbers, I sent out a year-end letter always, and I think everybody got one last week from us. I'm sure you had, you know, just took all kinds of time to pour through every line of it. It's riveting reading, I'm sure, but, but within there, you'll see that the number of, for instance, competency evaluations just goes, clicks up and up and up every year. And so when mental health and when addiction and things like that are part of society and those issues, they obviously find their way into the criminal justice system, and so then it becomes part of the defense. My client was mentally ill, my client was high on drugs at the time they committed us in such crime, and so we have to hire experts to address that and see if there's a legitimate defense, if it's something we want to counter. Anyway, the point is, those sorts of things cause us to spend money to try to hire experts to present our cases to juries so that we can ensure that the right answer is accomplished in court. So again, it's nothing earth-shattered, it was $28,000, but it was just enough that we thought, it's time to at least carve out a little bit there. Which leads us to the final package, though. Again, I set this, we set these in order, what we thought was going to be our priorities coming into the budget session, before I knew that, I don't think I'd ever heard the phrase COVID-19, I'd heard of coronavirus, but I certainly didn't anticipate it doing what it's done. So we'll pull back here. Understanding that it's a luxury for me even to be standing here, given all the other county departments who've had to tighten their belts, but if there is a ask that I could make, it would be that priority number three here would be given strong consideration. And what that is, it's for docket assists. So what we used to do, what we did from the 60s until about two years ago in Cedric County, was we would have a lawyer and a docket assist person go to the courtroom, and it was a single judge who called the jury trials and the prelims. For years, it was Clark Owens, before him, Paul Clark, and then after that, Greg Waller, Warren Wilbert, Jeff Garing, Eric Yost, different judges along the way. They were the central assignment judge. And we would all go there, there was one person at the table for us, one for the defense, and we would announce what the case was, and then they'd send us to one judge or another around the courthouse. And that's how it worked. For reasons I've belabored enough, that system has changed. So now we are to respond to 10 different courtrooms. Having a single person within the office whose job it is to attend to every doc, every hearing, and make sure that we're in the right place at the right time, and having a support staff member who we could assign to each of those judges, I think would really help our operations and ensure that we could attend to all the expectations of the court. I'm not asking for 10, one for each judge, but we have an A and B system within the court system right now. This would be a big step for us, just to be able, I could assign one person to do two judges, one in A and one in B, and then that way, it would help us in our internal organization, and frankly, increase our efficiencies. And above all, I mean, well, it would help, I think, with the stress level and the retention issues I'm having with lawyers. It's a tough time to be in this business right now, it's very busy. Now, that was priority number three, what's changed, why is that now number one? Well, now that I do, now that I have heard COVID-19, and I do know what it's done to our court system, we have been out of business largely for almost three months now, and we're going to have to figure out a way to get three months' worth of cases back into the flow of things, while we continue to get new cases in the door. That is a lot to accomplish in a short amount of time. And we also have the specter of speedy trial that always is, you know, hanging over us. And so our ability to be where we need to be, be as efficient as possible, and do so without frankly burning everybody out in my office, is why I'm standing here making that ask. Whether the money's there or not, whether it's a policy decision or not that you want to make, I fully understand you're in a rock and a hard place, but I do appreciate the chance to even get, get the chance to be up here to ask, but I think it would certainly help our operations. I think vicariously, it would help the overall flow of the justice system and the criminal courts, the court, the, say, the judicial budget as well for the judges and their staff as well. So that's the, that's the priority. If I have to pick one, that's the one right now in the new world we find ourselves in. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Mark, I recall that in your last discussion, you were, we had a little, you presented also that you're losing potentials to other competitors, other jurisdictions, so you don't have that as part of your ask today?
You know, we're, yeah, I mean, we're still, yeah, it's, ask me in 90 days how things are, and I'll have a better answer. My concern is that we're going to have to go to work the backlog down, it's going to be all hands on deck for a very long time. This is not going to be a 30-day or 60-day push, and then we're on the other side of this by the fall. I think we're going to be slugging it out for the next several months, next six months at least, trying to get cases into court and get this done, so.
Your A and B request of this 269,000 is for two people.
Well, to break it down here, so there were five separate requests initially, before all this, and the first one was for 300,000 for three lawyers. The second one was three admin assists for 166,000. I'm recognizing that now's not the time to ask for either of those. The third priority of the five was the five support staff members, and that's for the trial division, and that would be 269,000 for those five people. And then the rest are on, you know, on the table, but.
Right. So if, just for my knowledge, if you were wanting, so these five positions is your priority?
Yes, sir.
And that's that. If you wanted to try to catch up some of your salary gaps, what ballpark would that number be?
We're actually doing a salary study right now, trying to see where we're at. I mean, the thing that has concerned me the last few years, just, I'll try not to man too much here, but we lose people to the private sector. It's just a part of doing business in the DA's office.
Okay.
These people have law degrees, they're, you know, they can go elsewhere, they don't have to work in the public sector for less money. What's been odd to me, what's been unexpected to me the last three to five years, is when I lose people, it's not to the private, it's not the big law firms, it's to other public sector jobs where they're going and making significantly more. I lost two senior-level attorneys who are going to be making 30 and 40,000 respectively, a year more than they are working for me, to another county attorney's office in another part of the state. That's, that's not something I've seen in 20, in the 25 years I've done this.
Well, that's good information. So you're doing a study?
Yes, sir.
With our HR department?
Correct.
Okay.
We're in that process.
Can your attorneys sign and not compete when they?
I don't believe that's probably in the cards.
All right.
Extra ask, you know.
Okay.
Well, they're actually not competing, they're going to, they're just going to other places.
Well, that's true. So.
Maybe they've gone to our counselor's office, too.
That has happened.
I think I've heard that recently, so, yeah, we're guilty. I'm wondering, and maybe this is more for Lindsay, but with some of these expenses being directly caused by COVID-19, could any of our CARES money work for this, at least for, he thinks it's going to be for the foreseeable future, can we not hire staff with that money to help his office for the next year?
So certainly, we could hire temporary staff through the 30th. That would be zero issue. I think these are systemic issues, though, and so we could definitely use that to get us through 2020. I think for the 21 budget and beyond, though, that would need to be an operating expense we take on, unless somehow that CARES money is freed up or the deadline is extended.
So in my talks with Congressman Estes and his office, and I know Senator Moran's called maybe all of us at this table, they want to know some of these things, that if we said, hey, we know for the next year and a half, we need staff for our district attorney's office to make up, those are the type of requests that I think politically, we can connect with our federal legislators and ask them maybe for an exemption. Because I guarantee you, Mr. Bennett, it's not the only district attorney in Kansas or in America with the same problem, caused, exacerbated, I should say, not caused, you were having issues before, but it's been highly exacerbated because of this. So I think this is a good thing, if we can get Mr. Repun to help us craft how we need to request it, but this is going to be a long-term expense from COVID-19, it sounds like to me.
We were, District Attorney and I were having a sidebar discussion before this meeting, and you're exactly right. And it's not just the DA's office, it's the court system.
Well, yeah, I think I told you about my conversation with Jeff Garing, that he says it's going to be a year at least.
Yeah, so we're going to be crafting this needs assessment of the community over the next week or two. And I think that part of the package of that, this comprehensive package of needs assessment, clearly, we need to look at the court system, which would be inclusive of the DA's office, and it's clearly not going to be solved by 12:30 of 2020. It's clearly going to be over the next year or two. So as we package that, Commissioner, I think that helps us then communicate with our federal representatives to give them a good definitive answer of what Cedric County, southeast Kansas issues are. So I think we're right on track with that.
I'm glad to hear this today, because I know Senator Moran and Congressman Estes have been asking us, what do we need? I think this is something that's pretty simple, that even, you know, having a letter from you, Mr. Bennett?
Absolutely.
To, for us to back it up, say, this is legitimate, and here's how it's tied to COVID-19, because you do need the help. I appreciate you being very judicious and conservative with your requests, but if what you're saying is necessary, we need to figure out a way to get that done. So thank you for your willingness to help us out with this budget.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
But we have money for this reason.
So give me about, like, give me one minute here, and I'll just give you a quick overview so that you're armed with information in the event you do get those calls from the congresspeople that represent the state of Kansas. As of two weeks ago, we had about 400 cases that had been, we continued to take cases coming in the door, and we have approved filing, we have approved charges on about 400 cases. They have not been put into the system yet, because we have no place to put them at this point. Once we kick the case into the system, it kicks all sorts of other triggers. They need certain hearings, and we're already going to be clamoring for each individual judge's time. How do I put 400 more cases in? I can't. So we're going to be stretching those out over the next year. There's one other thing here, and this is what Tom and I were talking about earlier, how do you set jury trials? That's the big elephant in the room. How do you have jury trials for 10 different judges and get, you need about 40 to 50 jurors per trial, per judge, to seat a jury? That's, let's just say, 400 to 500 people need to come into this building every Monday morning, once we get started to work this down for the next year. I don't know how you do that. Well, we'll split it into two days, we'll split it into three days, that's fine, but now two-day jury trials become three and five-day jury trials, and so maybe we don't get them done in a week. Now they split it into the next week, which just pushes, everything kicks the can down the road. At some point, you may be faced, and I'm not going to be hyperbolic and say that it will or give you odds, I have no idea, but you may be faced with the specter of having to find off-site locations where jury trials can be handled. I've seen high school gymnasiums and other things used around the country. For an anecdotal case, okay, you know, I can see that happening. For a week's worth of operations, for a year's worth of operations, that's, that's a tough, tough order. So, anyway, just wanted to give you that quick overview.
Mark, that's really, thank you for sharing that.
Yes, sir.
Because that's important, that'll help our discussions as well. I would think that would clearly fall into some CARES support temporarily for this year, so.
I would think.
That we may need to re-lean on you for.
And at any point, and the last thing I'll leave you with is, there's a Supreme Court of Kansas who's really in charge of this issue for us. We looked at what the governor's doing and the emergency orders, and we looked at what the county commission does, but at the end of the day, I answer to the Supreme Court. And so as their executive orders are issued, I'll have more information. And when they, not until they tell us we can do jury trials, will that happen. Once that does, though, I'm happy to, I'll alert Tom and come back and give you a quick overview, if you'd like.
Okay. Lindsay, you had something to add?
Not necessarily for this discussion, just to follow up as soon as that's done.
And then, is there any, is there any one-sentence summary of where we're at with Odyssey, or is that, we don't worry about this Odyssey world yet?
One sentence is, they're working on it, it was, the first big round of openings was to take place in a set of jurisdictions identified by the OJA, Office of Judicial Administration, that was supposed to take place in the first, I guess, next week, first week of June. That was delayed because of COVID.
Okay.
Ours is still technically set for August, but it, I mean, it's influx here, I'll knock wood, but it seems that it would make sense that if the first round can't get started on time, us being in the next round will get pushed back in the fall as well. I'm crossing my fingers, because we're still needing time to get that accomplished.
Okay, well, I think that's important. If you know more current information, to please communicate with.
I'll share with, yes.
With Commissioner Dennis.
Yes, sir.
For your support. Thank you. Teamwork, please.
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Okay, and Commissioners, if I can, before we jump into our next decision package, this is a very timely discussion, maybe to talk about COVID and CARES really quickly, just to give some definition to the process and what we're expecting to happen over the next few weeks. So we have a call scheduled with Wood O'Brien's today at 4 o'clock.
So we have a call scheduled with Wood O'Brien's today at 4 o'clock to do a deep dive, as they call it, into that Notice of Funding Opportunity Form that we will be bringing to you for consideration next Wednesday. And so, once you all have a chance to look at that, hopefully, we can get a draft to you well in advance of that. But if you have a chance to look at that and let us know if there's any concerns or issues you have, hopefully, you can approve it next Wednesday, and we can get it out to the community at that time and start understanding what the level and depth and type of need is. So based on some of the information that Wood O'Brien has seen in other communities, and based on some of the requests, we've already kind of told them about, things we've heard about from you all during meetings, also emails and things we may have received, we know that there's going to be probably some distributions for local governments, townships, maybe even other school districts. We know that there's probably going to be healthcare needs, maybe for hospitals or clinics, especially if they are associated with the county, or maybe in a not-for-profit status. We expect that there could be some requests from social service providers, which would include assisted living facilities and nursing homes and those types of things, as well as food distribution centers, food banks and things like that, Meals on Wheels, schools, not just K through 12 schools, but also maybe secondary folks, as they're trying to figure out if they have to do virtual learning in the fall, if there's some needs there. And then finally, I think we've talked about it in multiple ways, but the economic revitalization side of things. So other communities have done business interruption grants or grants to help folks reopen safely to implement, you know, the social distancing, masking, protecting their staff, also protecting public. So those are just some of the core areas they've already described to us. We also, just yesterday, got the final internal form, the internal request form. And so what that's going to allow us to do is to solicit information from the district attorney, from the sheriff's office, from the district court, from EMS, from others, to say, what is it that you think you need to get through December 30th? And it can run the gamut. And we have a special email, we'll roll that out either tomorrow or Monday, but we have a special email account where everybody will be sending that in. And so we'll be getting information internally. We'll also be getting information from external. And so then we will work with Wood O'Brien's to basically distill all that information, come up with themes, and then bring those to you, probably in two-to-one settings or even one-on-one settings, to talk about, here's everything we've heard, do deep dives with you individually, give us a chance to get information, and then we'll bring that back to you in a public format with some recommendations, hopefully with pots, dollars assigned to each of those categories, what might be available. Also, knowing that this has to last, this at least through December 30th, and there's discussions about using it for revenue replacement or using it for broadening the scope. And so we're going to try and be very, very careful and very strategic in this. We did talk with the finance director at JOCO yesterday. They are not yet to this stage of the process. I think, in fact, they were gonna have a call on it at 5 o'clock last night to start talking about what process. It doesn't sound like they will be quite as, I don't know that they'll be doing the Notice of Funding Opportunity. I think they may try and handle it internally. I think they anticipate having a lot of needs themselves, so they will try and focus their dollars there. And so far, they've been referring cities within their county, actually to the state, for the state's $1 billion. So our process may not look like theirs, but I think our process will definitely be tailored for our community. So I hope that maybe addresses some of the process questions associated with what we're hearing about today. And sorry if that was really long-winded.
No, that's good.
And not what you wanted.
Lindsey, so I like the internal, so all of our departments internally will be getting a notice within the next day or two, and they can start working on that. And they'll know clearly COVID-related, this-year, emergency world. So thank you for talking to Johnson County's CFO. Are you or is somebody talking to the state to clarify if the state's gonna help Johnson County cities and Cedric County cities? Or is, are they saying, JOCO and Cedric, you gotta take care of your own cities? Is anybody talking?
So informally, I have heard that the state budget director has said Johnson and Cedric will be responsible for helping their own cities. Now, I don't know if that's actually a policy decision that's been made.
Does it, does it need to be reconfirmed by others?
Yes. And I think there's the Spark Committee that was set up, that's made up of business leaders and legislators, and those folks are supposed to be helping to direct the $1 billion. And so I don't, I think that will be the group that ultimately maybe makes the call or at least makes the recommendation for how it's handled. And so it may not hurt, I can get that notice recirculated with the members of that team. And if you all have connections, I think certainly it would behoove us to try and get a feel for where they're going.
Well, I just questioned, if Johnson's referring cities to the state, but Cedric's gonna say, we'll take care of it, I'm not real same-page comfortable on that. I don't really care which way it goes, but I'd like to be somewhat consistent, for sure. So, okay, I think it's, I just wrote down, it's on a to-do list, so, thank you.
So you're gonna, the call at Ford today with Wood O'Brien is to discuss how the Notice of Funding Opportunity will be, like, laid out?
So it is to get an initial look at what they have prepared as a recommendation for us. And then we have a follow-up call with them tomorrow, so that'll give us some time internally to talk. Hopefully, we'll have a draft to get to Tom Monday. If he's good with what he sees, then we would get it to you all in advance of Wednesday for you to look and start thinking about which tweaks you can make. And then, either ahead of time or from the bench on Wednesday, you can let us know if there's directives to adjust that.
So Wednesday, it gets approved. How is it communicated to the public?
So we have talked with Wood. They have a community or a crisis communication arm, and so they have some strategies that they will recommend to us. Jessica Osmeier has been our point person for FEMA. That gets, she'll use that route to get it out to not-for-profits, to get it out to public entities, not hospitals and those. We will also use every opportunity we have to reach out to, you know, WSU, the Public Policy Center there, to see if they can help us. We'll reach out to the Diversity Office at WSU and see if they can help us with some contacts, all of the various chambers that we know about, Chamber of Commerce, Nonprofit Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, all of those folks will get it pushed out. And then, of course, we'll ask you all to help us, maybe identify folks, we'll get it on every social media platform. And so I think we have a good strategy. By Wednesday, I'll be able to tell you more details about it.
Okay, so they'll be deadlines set, they'll be?
Yes. And it'll all be available on our website. That's something that they're working with us, is to figure out a really simple way for someone to go onto our website, and it says, you know, Notice of Funding Opportunity. And so somebody will click on it and say, I'm a business. So you click on that, and then it walks you through maybe some probing questions and gives you an opportunity to see what you need to submit. I'm an individual with, you know, a specific need. It gives you direction. And so there'll be really clear pathways for folks to follow, to try and make it really simple, to help them give us the information we need based on their particular need.
And then our stimulus review team will prioritize those? How is that prioritization going to happen?
So that will be something that Wood actually helps us with. So they're gonna take all of this data that we get back, and they're gonna help us put it into categories. And then we'll come to you, and that's where I was talking about, maybe those two-to-ones or even individual meetings, and we'll kind of tell you, here's everything that we've got. Let us know what additional information you need to make a decision. We'll help you prioritize. And then we can use Wood to help us prioritize. They also are working on telling us what other communities are doing, and they will facilitate a call with Johnson County at some point, too, to try and keep us aligned with their process. So once we have all of that information together, we'll try and make some recommendations to you, also based on the feedback we get from you. So that expenditure review group actually won't come into play until after you all have defined your categories, what you're okay with, and they will say, does this align with that? Is it an eligible expense? And if so, then they can recommend approval. If it doesn't align either way, then that would have to come to the commission for consideration to decide if you wanna fund it, even if it's not necessarily laid out in that plan. Does that make sense?
So it's gonna come to us, then go to them, then come to us?
Well, yes. So at this point, you all will, my understanding is you all want to approve every dollar that goes out. And so that stimulus review team is just going to take the information and make a recommendation to you to approve or not approve. If they recommend not to approve, obviously, you all, as the commission, can still choose to fund it.
But the categories, so that, you talked, say that again. The categories that?
I think what the commission needs to do, after Wood gives us a recommendation on the framework, the commission needs to be comfortable with that framework. So that comes to you first, as a commission, to say yes.
Just the framework, not the people who have just priorities?
Correct.
Not any specific funding requests?
Correct.
All of the specific funding requests will go to the review team as recommendations to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, ma'am.
I apologize.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
And just one more 10-second thing on the communication. When we meet next Tuesday at staff and we talk about COVID, Tanya Cole will be in here to talk about communications plans and some of the update for you, because you've allocated $25,000 of CARES money for marketing and communication. She'll give me an update on where that's headed. And all of the reach-out that we have to communicate things like this, including diverse and culturally sensitive groups within our community, she'll have an update on that plan, which helps us throw this thing out, not only to the chamber and to things that Lindsey mentioned, but also to other groups within the community. We're gonna try to be as comprehensive in this as we possibly can. So she'll give you an update on Tuesday.
Okay. All right.
I guess the one last final question that really isn't related to this, but I haven't talked to you yet, your 4 o'clock call yesterday about housing, can you give us an update on that?
I will. I'm gonna actually put something on paper for all of you, and as I do the weekly, it's kind of a long story, so as I do weekly visits, I'll get you something written and verbal on that today, ma'am.
Okay. Next up.
Okay. Next up, we'll be on page three under IT with tax system maintenance.
I don't know if Wes can hear us, since we're not at the podium. Aaron, is Wes online?
He's coming. He's coming right now.
Oh.
This is, yeah, this is handy spot for me to be.
Morning, Commissioners, Chairman. Wes Ellington, Chief Information Officer. Today, I have one decision package from IT on behalf of the tax departments, which is Treasurer, Registered Deeds, County Clerk, and Appraiser. This is the reoccurring maintenance support sum for $386,000 for the Augmentum System. This covers the technology changes, but also changes to the application to address county tax process changes. For this system, most customizations related to how the tax process works and the jurisdictions are developed and implemented by the vendor. I'd be happy to, well, I can talk about a little bit of funding. In the past, what I'm asking for is the Budget Authority in case the Registered Deeds Land Tech Fund doesn't have the funding to kick in. IT also kicks in a portion to make up the difference between those two from our current flat budget. So this is just a Budget Authority request in the event that the Registered Deeds doesn't have the funding to make up the difference between what I kick in, I, IT, IT's flat budget, and the bill for next year. Any questions?
Okay, this is like a request for having something in reserve in case we need it?
Pretty much, yeah. In the past, it's always been paid by IT, a portion of it out of my flat budget, and a portion of it out of Registered Deeds Land Tech Fund.
So we will be talking with Tanya to see what, if anything, she's able to provide. And then it, I think we always err on the side of caution that she may have other projects or other priorities that may require those funds. And so in that instance, then we would need to shift that full cost to the general fund. So it's not a new cost, it's just maybe new to the general fund. And so we will be working with her on that in the coming weeks to see what we can get, and then just make sure that this is covered either through Wes's general fund budget or put it in the county's tech fund after Tanya may make that transfer to us.
Okay. All right, thanks for explaining. Wes, can't thank you enough for what you do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And your staff, of course.
Great staff. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Next, we'll be going back to public safety. We'll be starting on page five with EMS.
Okay. We have our next guest walking down the hall.
All right, good morning again, Commissioners. Did you give them a page number for EMS already? Okay, so to begin with, decision packages that we're gonna talk about this morning, to begin with, are EMS. The first item is EMS durable medical equipment. For some historic perspective, portions of this ASK, this ASK includes the Physio Control Lucas Automatic Chest Compression Devices, the LifePak 15 Monitor Defibrillator Devices, the automatic external defibrillator, AEDs, suction devices, stair chairs, and oxygen bottle lift. So a portion of these were forecast as far back as late 2017, early 2018, that they would be approaching end-of-life, and the plan was to try to replace them in 2021. Part of that plan was to anticipate and forecast in advance so that if the budget performed and if there were dollars at the end-of-year savings that could be perhaps pushed into an equipment reserve fund to build up over that two- or three-year period, that there might be some dollars already in place. As it turns out, the budget did not perform in a manner that facilitated that, but the need still exists as we approach 2021. So this came in as a decision package. Previously, it was not in a formal decision package form, it was a discussion between EMS and budget finance, projecting out and trying to make plans. But nonetheless, the need is still there, so it came in this year as a formal decision package for 2021. And then obviously, things changed dramatically because of the coronavirus situation. So the need still exists, and a portion of these devices are required to be on an ALS ambulance, and they are required by the Kansas Administrative Regulation of the EMS Board to be on the ambulance and accounted for. A few of these devices are things that are, all of these devices are currently used on our ambulance to provide the type of ALS response and care to patients that we've set forth in our, both through the state regulations and also through the medical protocols for Cedric County. And so the only change that has occurred to this since it was submitted is that a updated quote was received on the AEDs, which reduced the cost of them by about $21,000. And in a $1.6 million ASK, $21,000's not much, but it's a little bit. So that's kind of the basis for this request at this time. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I just have a brief comment. This is a pretty sizable request. It appears over the last few months that we've done a lot of focus and capital support and expense support for EMS. And so, I mean, it seems like another, on top of a lot of what we've been doing. I'm not saying it's a bad deal, but I guess, has EMS been so far behind that everything we've done the last five months, then on top of this? Would this catch them up to be totally efficient going forward?
Well, like I said, this was something that was projected out as late as, or as early as 2017. So this is something that, if not in '21, this needs to be done probably in '22 at the latest. And again, we're not in crisis mode right now, but this had been projected as something that needed to probably happen in '21. If we need to push it out another year, we could live with that. And then there's been also some discussion about whether or not this might be one of the items that could be approved under CARES Act, because it is in support of.
Right.
Medical response and patient care. And these are devices that are approaching end-of-life, need to be replaced on the ambulances. Again, some of them are required pieces of equipment, and so we are at least looking at that. It's not guaranteed yet, but it's something that we're looking at.
Okay. Well, I think respectfully, at least from my perspective, if you could take another deep-dive look at what is COVID, you know, what is CARES-eligible, what is urgent now versus a little bit time from now? I have a lot of faith in. I have a lot of faith in Dr. Gallagher and their, and the staff and what you all do.
Yes.
It just is a kind of a, a little bit of an oh-my-gosh moment number for me, but anyway.
Well, this would be the first, this would be the first time a commission's been exposed to this. Like I said, this has kind of been a behind-the-scenes conversation, but you guys are just seeing it for the first time, so, yeah. This wasn't something that Dr. Gallagher and his current leadership team came up with this year. This is something that's been talked about, so.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What strikes me is, is it talks about maintaining our service with the City of Wichita.
Yes.
So will these be exclusively for use within the city of Wichita? Is that what?
No, they're making reference to, yeah, the contract.
Got it, thank you. So it's just making reference to the contract that we have with the City of Wichita, that this maintains it, that we had baseline, just standards for maintaining that contract, that we need to have stuff like this in there. Because as the chairman knows, when he was at the city and we renegotiated that, it's an extremely critical partner for us. So if this is something we need to do to maintain the integrity of our contract with the City of Wichita, then we really need to do it.
Yeah.
So just going through how critical that is. And it was, it was tenuous for a little bit, but thanks to the chairman, we got it, we got it through over on the city side. So anyway, if that's the case to maintain the contract, and I guess we could maybe at a high level talk to, have the county manager talk to the city manager about our budget realities. And if the city manager feels like we need to proceed with this, then we don't really have much of an option from my vantage point.
Well, we run an, we run an advanced life support ambulance service and the city contract is just one piece of that. There's state regulation, there's the medical protocols, and then the city contract just spelled out that, as part of that contract, that the county needed to continue to provide a advanced life support response system, so.
Yeah, no, I completely understand that. The City of Wichita agreement caught my eye. And then the other thing that caught my eye is that it says that you have the existing resources to do this.
Yeah.
And so this is the first time it's ever come to us, but just recognizing our economic realities, I guess, but.
The first layer there would be the regulatory piece. We need to comply with regulations and then if we do that, we're good.
We're good with the City of Wichita and we're good with all the regulations. I get it. Thank you, Wes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Commissioner How. Thank you, Chairman. Just, so I'm just curious, how long does this type of equipment typically last? How often, what's the cycle to replace this equipment?
This equipment was last replaced in 2014, so as it approaches seven to nine years, and we're at the seven-year mark, EMS has renewed a maintenance agreement with the vendor to get through '21 in light of what we're experiencing now. Just to be safe, they extended their maintenance agreement with the company to maintain that equipment because they don't want, obviously, we don't want failures with that type of equipment. And they do, you know, occasionally have those breakdowns where they need to have the equipment fixed. So they renewed their maintenance agreement for '21 to maintain this equipment through '21. That's where I say if we can, if we need to, if CARES Act doesn't cover this and if our budget is in a situation where in '21 this isn't something that we can manage, then we would look toward '22, potentially to do it in '22 if we could.
So what will happen with the old equipment?
It's trade-in. They receive a trade-in allowance for that old equipment. It's part of the, when you look at the final cost on these, it will have, this is the cost, here's the trade-in allowance, and then.
Okay, this might be a Lindsay question, but it says in here, the paragraph that Commissioner O'Donnell referenced here says, "It is our understanding that nothing remains of the set aside." Is that, can you please clarify?
So typically, what we would try to do, similar to what we did for like elections equipment, is we would try and do year-end transfers to try and build up a balance in our equipment replacement fund. Unfortunately, with the billing transition, we actually had a shortfall. And if you recall, we refunded the fleet charges back to the fleet fund. And so EMS has been using their excess balances to repay that, kind of as the highest priority. And so instead of doing year-end transfers to cover the costs of this equipment, which to Rusty's point, has been in the, has been on the radar. But instead of doing those year-end transfers to build up the equipment replacement, we've been repaying the fleet fund.
So when it says we have existing resources, we're talking about current year budget authority that will transfer over to this fund? Where we?
So existing resources is a typical phrase that folks will use basically to say there's no new revenue coming in to support it. So sometimes through decision packages, folks will also have an offsetting revenue. In this case, it will have to be either tax support or charges for service. And so depending on how the EMS budget performs this year, there could be a year-end transfer of cash, but they do still owe a significant amount to the fleet fund, and so I'm not necessarily optimistic about that.
Say, we haven't had a year-end transfer of cash in that budget category, I think, since I've been a commissioner that I'm aware of, I don't think we have.
I think you're right, because I do think we made these acquisitions back in '14. I think we've done it for ambulances, but not for durable equipment.
So if we approve, if we approve this, again, they say there's no existing resources left over, which I don't think there will be, probably, maybe there will be. But if we approve this expenditure, we're actually really signing up, if you will, for one and a half million dollars worth of equipment because we need it, even if it's property tax funds?
Correct.
Okay. Just a thought, if that, if that transfer's not available, I think we ought to maybe, it sounds like you're okay with doing this over not '21, but maybe '22. Can we put some of the money back in '21 like we do with the election equipment and maybe actually make the purchase of '22 so we maybe split this over two years?
We definitely can. We can look at multiple options. And hopefully, now that we're starting to get some data in on our financial situation, hopefully, we'll be able to make some updates to our forecasts and make some better informed decisions for you.
Right, I mean, obviously, we want this stuff to work, but if this stuff is legal to go nine years, we have to wear it out before we replace it. You know, we ought to get as much life out of this as possible. If it's not working, that's different. But if it's working and it's certified, it's legal to use, I'd like to take it to end of life before we spend money to replace it. But I do think planning ahead and getting this over a couple of budget cycles is smart.
Are we not taking this to the end of life?
Well, they projected end of life as seven years. They were going to try to replace it in '21 with the understanding that pushing it out to '22 would be, we wouldn't be in a critical situation. This equipment is still functioning pretty well. They were able to get a renewed maintenance agreement through '21 so that if there are breakdowns, they've got to, they've got to warranty a contract with the company to get it fixed. So that's where we're at right now. They don't want to take it down to the point that they're all breaking down. We don't want to be in a situation where something doesn't work on an ambulance when you need it, so.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, to follow along with Commissioner How and Commissioner Cruz's questions, it says it's approaching end of life and we're talking about 100 defibrillators. Do we need to buy 100 in one year or can we buy 50 in one year and 50 in the next year? You know, we're buying 40 LifePak systems, for example. Do you need 40? Can you get by with 20 and 20 the next year? That, I just, that's the question, is it's approaching end of life, do we need to do it all in the year that we're having budget problems?
That's, we can discuss that. I mean, I think they're following the pattern as they replaced them all in 2014 and so they're all the same age. We could, we could look at the possibility of doing half one year and half another year and then we would be on that staggered cycle going forward, I suppose.
But evidently, you have more than one on each machine, on each ambulance. Otherwise, we wouldn't need 100. We got, what, 20-some ambulances?
Brian, are you on the line? Do you want to address the 100 count on the AEDs for the Commissioner?
Yeah, can you hear me fine?
Speak up a little bit.
Brian Nicholas, Deputy Director for Admin. The 100 AEDs, we also provide for the fire department, city and county fire department. And so the reason we just replace them, we tried to replace them all at once, is mainly because of, you know, training issues. If there's any changes in the model, we can train everybody at once. But, yeah, we can certainly look at replacing them over a couple of years if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner How? I guess I have a couple of questions then. So when you say city and county, are you talking about Wichita only or are you talking about all fire departments across the county? We've got about 12 different departments, departments in the county altogether.
Brian, did you hear that question?
Yeah, it is, it is all of the fire departments per our agreement.
Okay, then again, so again, and I appreciate the question, if there's economies of scale, if we get a better deal by buying these in a bigger quantity, there might be a reason to wait. The other part of this is if, even if we were to replace 20 and 20, or say 50 and 50 over the, over the two years, if we're replacing 50 when they have a year of life left, I still would rather not replace these prematurely. I'd rather get them, as long as they're legally allowed to be used and they're still in good working condition, I think we ought to try to get them to that point. And of course, we don't want anything to fail, but everything, everything could fail, even on day one, it could fail. So ideally, we would have, you know, great working equipment, but if it, if it can legally be used and it's in good working condition until '22, then I think we ought to, ought to try to get as much life out of these as possible. Thank you, thanks. Commissioner Dennis?
I guess I didn't understand the answer to Commissioner How's question. Did you say that we buy AEDs for every fire department in Sedgwick County, including Wichita and Mount Hope and Chenee? They're separate governments and they've got their own tax base. I don't understand why we're buying it for other governments that have their own taxing authority.
Brian, do you want to speak to the agreement that, from which that derives?
Yes, I mean, that's the agreement that's been in place for many, many years. And under that agreement, Sedgwick County is tasked with providing them with the Automated External Defibrillators to be placed with their first responders. And it's, like I say, just corresponds to the county agreement.
I guess I don't understand how we got into this agreement. We don't buy fire trucks for everybody out there. We don't buy a lot of things. We don't buy anything that I know of for other governments. This kind of surprises me to find out that governments that have taxing ability, that we're subsidizing those governments to, especially in a year that we're trying to figure out how to make ends meet.
I think it's probably part of the medical, the EMS system, the medical system countywide, where they're trained EMTs and paramedics. And EMS has been supplying the gloves, the nitrile gloves and the AEDs for those medical first response entities across the county for a number of years. And that's just been the common practice in the agreement they've had with those other first response agencies that are providing medical, medical first response.
I might just comment, and maybe Brian could chime in. Whenever we talk about splitting fleet or buying something in sequential years, I always think of the, and Brian alluded to it a little bit, the training capacity of that and the efficiency of training, and then the differences in models. And I think probably why the county got involved in that type of agreement years ago is that type of equipment, as responders move around the county, they have to be able to all seamlessly use the same kind of equipment in that kind of circumstance. So an EMS or a fire person that goes and responds to a call has to be able to use that equipment that's on that site. It has to be seamless. So I always think about that when we talk about agreements like that. That's probably how we got into it to start with, is a consistency of use and training. There's efficiencies in that. And even if we're going to talk about, I'd really want to have Brian explore if we decide to split the purchase of any of these types of equipment up, that the models are the same so that we seamlessly can move across the county, fire and EMS professionals can move seamlessly, and that one piece of equipment is not radically different from another piece of equipment and you have to train twice on essentially get the same job then. So we'll look very carefully at that, Commissioner. And if possible, then it does make sense and we can split between budget years of acquisition. But if it doesn't make sense, I think we have to come back to you and report on that.
And if I could too, just very quickly jump in on the EMS discussion, that is the one fund where we will actually provide a reimbursement of the EMS property taxes that we collect back to entities that aren't participating in our EMS program. So there are four cities that actually receive, and in a township, I believe, that actually receive cash back from us, and that is the only situation. And so I think that's part of why this is set up that way too, just because of the EMS system and that financial, the way we work those property taxes.
So bottom line is, if we buy in volume, usually get a little bit of better pricing. And then these AEDs that have been quoted are different from the AEDs that we're using. It's newer technology, it's seven years newer. And these are, these AEDs are, the ones that we have are fixed. And Brian, you can speak to this if I get it wrong, but the ones that we have are a fixed setting and the new AEDs are adjustable so that they can deliver different levels of, correct, Brian?
Well, I think, I think you're referring to the chest compression devices, but on the topic of the AEDs, there's definitely efficiencies to having similar models because we provide the defibrillation pads, the cables. They're compatible with our LifePak monitors that are on the ambulance and the AEDs. They use the same, as well as the volume discounts involved in the purchase. So there's a lot of compatibility. There needs to be, in my opinion, compatibility across the whole, whole service for, for training and restock and maintenance purposes.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for the discussion and clarifications.
Chairman, we have a time management issue I need to make you aware of. The bid board was scheduled for this room at 10:30. There's a lot of other things we need to maybe talk about. Is it okay if we reschedule another meeting with the commission? And I'm going to look at you, Lori, and maybe tomorrow or what your timeline is on how fast we need to get this done. Or we could keep plowing, the will of the commission. If you guys want it, we'll tell the bid board to reschedule, but your call.
How much do you anticipate longer do we need if we wanted to re, everybody could kind of check their schedules tomorrow, I guess, morning. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Since we're all here engaged in this, could the bid board reschedule?
If that's the will, we'll, we'll do whatever the will is.
Can the bid board use the conference room or something?
We could, if that's the will, we'll, we'll get it arranged. You guys just say how long you want to go. We think another 30 to 60 minutes here, yeah, probably.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Good to go then, all right. We do now, sir.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Can bid board get their stuff done in five minutes? Let's do a five-minute break. Let's return back. Return back at 10:40. Return back at 10:40. Crews and Mr. Stoltz, if we get one of them here, let's start, let's wait until... Okay. We are back. Okay. What do we have next?
You already gave page number on the next one.
Page 21.
Page 21. So this is also an EMS decision package. This one is for a power load cot system. And I will mention that, as we as a budget team went through and, and there's been some discussion earlier that there was about $18 million worth of decision packages that were initially submitted by our departments. These three EMS decision packages stayed intact in part because of the CARES Act, the potential to fund them through CARES Act. So, the second one here is the power load cot system.
Hey, Rusty, can I ask, so of that, you referenced the 18 million?
Mm-hmm.
And this, this year it looks like it's like almost 2 million. What, what was EMS before part of an 18 million? This is a global question, obviously.
EMS's total before was 2.8 million.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
Yes, sir. So the power load cot system is a enhancement to the EMS budget. This is submitted as a, as a safety device, listening to the employees as we went through the transition last year, and then as the executive leadership team down there evaluated needs. The power load cot system is a enhancement to their ambulances. That allows the crews to load persons, persons into the ambulance without the physical manual lifting. It reduces the strain on the employees' bodies and their backs. And there've been studies done that show that this helps reduce the number of lifting injuries, and therefore the number of hours that employees are out, work comp expenses and lost productivity to employees on injury leave. And so it's for those reasons, listening to the staff down there, looking at the viability of reducing injuries and the estimated cost savings if you reduce the number of injuries and the number of hours that productivity loss to injured employees. They recommended retrofitting about half of the ambulance fleet, which we, which would be about 15 ambulances with these power load cot systems. There are a few ambulances that in the next two or three years will be approaching the end of life where they need to be either retrofitted with new, with new parts and pieces or else replaced. And so they would not do those. Whenever they send those out for bid next time, they would include in the, in the RFP that this be part of the equipment that was included in those ambulances. So, over time, they would transition the whole fleet to the power load cot systems to mitigate injuries in the future. So this was, they, they just kind of settled randomly and, on the number of 50% by looking at the age of their fleet. If they did this one ambulance at a time or a few at a time, they estimated it would take about eight years to get this done. So they thought they would jump off with a request for half the fleet at a cost of $24,810 each, which would be a total cost of $372,150 to do half of the fleet in the coming year. And then again, they would retrofit a few over the next few years as they replace ambulances and eventually get to 100% in time. There was literature attached to that, which I know is in your packet, which was a huge number of pages to look at, but there was a formula or a form in there that they utilized from, from the vendor that allowed you to plug in number of injuries you have from lifting incidents per year, the, the cost of these, the initial cost to purchase these, and then what your return on investment would be if you did this and you mitigated and prevented those injuries based on a fixed cost of what an average injury costs a, a department. And the estimated return on investment would be 3.5 years, you would pay off the cost of replacing these, the existing cots with the power lift cots. And from that point forward, you would have savings. So, that was the formula they used there. And again, this is obviously, it's intended to protect their staff and reduce injuries. It is an enhancement to their budget, but they wanted to get it out there for consideration.
I might just also add in here, Commissioners, as we were going through decision packages and we got to this grouping, we started, and that was right after we had received CARES. We thought that there was a potential that some or all of these EMS commodity types of purchases or equipment type of purchases might qualify under CARES. That's why we chose to leave this and to bring this forward and look at it in real time. So, we still hope that, but we still have analysis to do. We still have to talk to Whit O'Brien. It's possible that could happen. It's possible it wouldn't. It's all important equipment, but that's part of the reason that a lot of this stayed for the 2021 budget years to bring this conversation to the table now, just to qualify that.
Well, that's, that's helpful information. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Does it require any special training to be able to use this? It's different than the existing cots that you use?
I think the training would be minimal. It's a device, it's, that's built into the ambulance and the cot system they use. I don't think there's any special training that would be required on this. Just so you know, as a matter of statistics, they, they tell me that about 1 in 10 patients that they load into an ambulance is greater than 250 pounds. And at least once a week, they are loading somebody into an ambulance that is approaching 600 to 700 pounds. Obesity is a problem and a lot of our paramedics are small statured and don't have a lot of, a lot of bulk. So, again, this is something that they think protects their people, but obviously is an enhancement from what we've had in the past.
But this doesn't get them up and down the steps up front or anything, does it?
No. In the first, in the first, the first packet that we talked about, those stair chairs that we, that were mentioned in there, that's something that if they're in a, in a building or if they got to get somebody down from the upstairs or from the basement, they can use those stair chairs. They strap them into those chairs. They have special wheels that grip to the stairs, and that helps them get them down narrow stairways rather than on a spineboard or a big cot. They can get them and strap them into those stair chairs and get them down more safely and with less strain on the body. But this is for the cot system where they're rolling them to the ambulance and loading them up. This has an automatic lift that helps load that cot so that they're not physically, you know, bending and lifting to get them in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any, Rusty.
All right. The final one is simply a cost of business request. Lorian, page number?
Yes, it'll be on page 47, EMS Commodities Budget.
So from a year to year, EMS, obviously, they have to, when we, when we're doing forecasting or when we're looking at the environment, forecasting into the following year, they have to look and see if there's going to be cost of doing business increases, cost of living increases. Back in 20, during the 2019 budget development cycle, which would have been in 2018, EMS did come forward with a request for a budget enhancement of $25,000, anticipating increases increases in drug and commodity costs. In 2019, during the 2020 budget development cycle, EMS did not come forward with a cost of, cost of doing business increase request for that year. So as we came into 2020, we are still in drug and commodity budget levels that we, that we had in 2019. As EMS looked this year at the future and looked back over the past 10 years, what they saw was an average increase in drug prices of about 9% and an overall commodities increase of about 1.8%. That's not terribly different from what the forecast saw back in 2018 where it was about 10% and 2%, and that seems to be pretty consistent looking back over an average of 10 years. Drug prices are going up. Some years are a little less, some years a little more, but on average about 9 to 10% and commodities about 2% per year, based on the fact that they didn't make a request last year for an increase. They went ahead and submitted this year saying that they believed that based on what they're seeing, they would have a need for about a $30,000 increase to cover the cost of drugs and other commodities and supplies. When you look at drugs alone, and there was a table attached, when you look at drugs alone projecting a 9% increase, that comes out to about $27,000. If you look at the overall commodities budget, which includes the drugs at a 1.8%, that comes out to around $23,000. Brian just kind of rounded that up to a, to an even 30. Then when we look at what we're spending this year, currently we have CARES Act coverage on some of that, but what we're spending on protective equipment and supplies for EMS and our medical first responders. If that type of inflated pricing carries into 2021 beyond the CARES Act money availability, then they could very well see, you know, an increase from what they've been paying in the past for those types of supplies and commodities as well as drugs. So right now, it's, it's their forecast. It's not set in stone, but what they're, what they're estimating and forecasting is that they could need as much as $30,000, $25,000 to $30,000 increase in '21 just to cover the cost of drugs and the cost of supplies and commodities to, for their operations. So that's what that is.
Isn't this, Jesse, isn't this just the cost of doing business? Isn't this just the regular budget?
I'll let the CFO speak to, speak to that.
So we did include some of the cost of doing business in the request that you've already seen, but the issue becomes for us a matter of fairness. So folks have been asked to live within a flat budget. Some folks do have cost of doing business and they're just going to eat that in their budgets. And so for a department to ask for additional budget authority at this time, again, it's really just about a matter of fairness, bringing that to the attention of the commission and then getting that approval to get added in. So that's.
Well, if the drugs cost a dollar today and next year they cost a dollar 20, are you, we're not going to say, "Don't buy the drugs," I don't think, but maybe I'm looking at this too simple, I'm sorry. So. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How much of this do we recover? I guess there's a balance. I'm trying to figure out how the balance works out. So you're saying we won't recover at least $30,000 worth of the medicine because we charge for the services?
So our, our fees for service are set in, they're codified, passed through resolution by the commission, and it's my understanding we haven't had a, we haven't had a fee increase since 2016?
Right, there are some built-in costs increases for like fuel and that kind of thing, but aside from that, yes, a deliberate increase hasn't happened since then.
The, the charges for ser, for charges for services to patients that we transport?
Right.
Yeah. So we, we're not increasing our, our fees for service to our customers, but our operating costs continue to increase annually because of inflation cost of living.
But I guess my question is that the people that use the services should pay for it, not, this is coming out of property tax money, correct?
The.
Pay for this, or where's, where's this $30,000 coming from?
Well, based on the projection for revenues and the mil levy allocated for EMS, this would be an enhancement of $30,000, which I assume would be general fund dollars infused into the budget in order to offset the difference between revenues and, and the.
What you're telling me is that people that are paying property tax are subsidizing the people who are using the ambulance service?
CFO?
So, so they do. There, and there's, there's a mix of folks who can't pay and then there's a mix of folks who aren't transported and so we're not able to charge. And then when you throw in the complications of capitated rates for Medicare and Medicaid, we may not be able ever to recover fully the cost of a transport. And so to that extent, this long sheet that budget provides will show the mil levy rate that goes to EMS per year for next year. It is estimated to be about .786 mils. Each mil generates roughly 5 million and so that is the, the level of tax support that's going to subsidize the operations where the charges for service can't, can't support it.
Yeah, it's about a 70, roughly a 75-25 split between revenues from services and the mil levy subsidized for all of those. They transport about 64% to 68% of their, of their runs result in transports, which will resort, resort in some type of billing. And the other 33, 35, 36% are, they go out, they provide some type of care, but they don't transport and therefore they cannot bill for it currently.
I realize $30,000 is a pretty small portion of our entire budget, but by the same token, I don't know why that, that the people who are utilizing this service couldn't pick up a little bit more of the expense on it rather than us picking up $30,000 out of general fund.
And that would, that would require a fee increase. I would assume that the only way to accomplish that is that the commission approved some, some rate increase and we would probably need to we'd probably need to analyze what that rate increase amount should be and bring it back to you at a later time if the commission had some interest or will in doing that.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just tell you that when we did that in 2016, it was painful. I, I, I think that those fees are high enough. I don't like where they're at, at right now, and I understand that we don't want general taxes to pay for this, but I would just say that if our call volume went way down, what we, we still have an entire system to, to, to pay for. It's kind of a baseline cost for our facilities, our ambulances and our personnel and our training and our equipment. All, all that's kind of built into the system. So a combination between general taxes and fees is appropriate for EMS. The entire fire protection system we have is completely on property taxes. And our people love the fact that we have first responders available in our community paid for with general taxes. And in, in case of EMS, we, we bill what we can, but I think that actually the pendulum may be swung a little bit too far towards fees. It's really very high. If you have a, if I remember correctly, I think that if you have a, a critical call, it can, the highest, again, I forget what they, what they classify those as, you probably know, but the most, the highest urgency, if you will, the one that's most critical is about $800 for that transport. And that's, that's pretty high. So I don't know if we can go any higher. And you look at what's, you know, our competition, you know, the AMR or whatever it's called, their fees are much less. And so there's, there's a lot of pressure for us to move towards private sector ambulance services if we continue to raise these fees. So I think we need to start looking at, you know, what's reasonable for general taxes to cover, if you will, the baseline overhead of our entire EMS system and how much of the, how much of that should be, be borne by those people who are receiving services. And I think some of it should be, some of it should be either or. It shouldn't be all fees or it shouldn't be all property taxes. The combination makes sense.
Okay. Thanks for the comments from both. So, all right. I don't see any other questions.
That's all for EMS. I have one more and then I will be finished. This one is from the Science Center.
On page 50.
Okay. So as you're aware, last October, the Director of the Forensic Science Center retired. The Director of the Forensic Science Center for a number of years had served a dual role. He was a PhD-level board-certified toxicologist and was able to provide that level of service to the coroner's office, to the prosecutor's office and to law enforcement for purposes of interpretation of the analysis work from toxicologists at the center to provide pre-charging and pre-trial consultation to both law enforcement and to prosecutors and did work with defense attorneys as well, who were seeking information about their client's case and the findings at the Science Center from the Toxicology Department. Since his retirement, we need to replace the chief toxicologist. We need to have a chief toxicologist hired into the center to continue to provide those services. They're critical to the investigation and prosecution of criminal cases. They are critical to the determination of cause and manner of death for the coroner's office in certain cases. And the fact is, is that toxicologists with those certifications are not common and they don't move around much. The ones that exist don't move around much from where they are. We did advertise this position shortly before he left because we understood that it was going to be difficult to replace the chief toxicologist. Also understood that we really needed to bifurcate the two. The ability to find a chief toxicologist, as rare as they are, and particularly one who had the experience and knowledge to manage and direct an entire department would be probably about impossible. So we went ahead and separated the two out. We have a advertised position for the director and we have an advertised position for the toxicologist. Rather than coming in prior to, since we were getting into the budget cycle, felt it most appropriate to bring this in as a decision package as opposed to coming in out of cycle and saying, "We found a potential qualified toxicologist. We want you to approve a new position." Since we were this far along in the budget cycle, decided to bring it in in this form as a decision package for you to hear and consider. So the bottom line is we've had this position, the, the toxicologist's position we've had advertised for 229 days at this point. And in 229 days, we've received six applications and, I'm sorry, seven applications, and only one of those has actually had qualifications required to meet the minimum standards. The others were people who applied for jobs who had basically nothing in their resumes or very little in their resumes that even approached the qualifications, but they applied for, for some reason anyway. The bottom line on this is, as you see, the number on the page says 124,764. That would be the cost of hiring a person at maximum pay grade range. I'm sorry, that's not right. That would be hiring the person at minimum pay grade range with benefits. The reality is, we're not going to, we're not going to find a qualified person and hire a minimum weight, minimum pay range. Nor are we going to find a director that we can hire at minimum pay range that has qualifications. The former director was paid almost $200,000, $190,000, $90,400 plus benefits for a total package of 200, almost $246,000. Having bifurcated the two positions, and if we hire a chief toxicologist and a director, the true cost addition in that facility, having two positions instead of one, is going to be somewhere between about $55,000 and $70,000. It's not going to be 124. You hire both of them and somewhere above mid, minimum range, but around mid-range with their benefits, they're going to consume the $245,000 already allocated for the one position and it's going to cost somewhere between about $55,000 and $70,000 additional to have the second position in place. It's my recommendation that that's what's best for the Science Center. It's my recommendation that having that chief toxicologist on staff, number one, is critical for the coroner's office, but also for all the prosecution and criminal cases that are handled through the sheriff, the DA and the Wichita Police Department. And as, as a accredited coroner's office, our coroner's office is accredited and part of that accreditation is having a chief toxicologist available for consultation for those folks on a regular basis. So it's on that basis that I'm bringing this to you, asking you to authorize, give me permission to move forward and hire this, hire a qualified toxicologist and a qualified director.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. One is, how are we certified today if we don't have a toxicologist?
So currently, we, we are accredited and we have temporarily hired back the former director on a very limited basis, doing about 16 hours a month to try to go through some of these cases and do the interpretation and provide some consultation to the coroner and to the DA. Both of them were needing, we went a period, a period of time where we didn't have one and the caseload just kept backing and backing and backing and they were both getting really antsy because they needed those cases to be resolved. So we contracted with the former director on a temporary basis for about 16 hours a month to come in and manage some of those cases and get those consultations done and get those interpretations done until we could move forward and hire a permanent person in that place.
My second question, you're asking for this in the 2021 budget?
Yes, sir.
But we've been advertising for a number of days now. What happens if tomorrow you find the best person in the world? How do we hire that person if you don't have the funding until 2021?
So at this point, we are at the end of May, approaching, we're entering into June. And so I have six months of salary savings and it is my belief, and Lorian can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my belief that at this point with six months of salary savings, I have enough personnel wage dollars in the forensic science center budget to hire and get through the rest of this year without causing a, a problem with their budget authority in the personnel side. And then this would pick up in '21 with the additional dollars to support it going forward.
Very good. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the observation is that that department is critical to our community regardless of we're, we're supplying services that, about the state, you know, we have that discussion before, the state having us do this, but.
We'll be coming forward.
It's critical.
We'll be coming forward here in the coming weeks because the commission had asked for more information on the Science Center, so we'll be coming forward. In coming weeks, we'll schedule a time to talk about the, the CIP request for expansion of the facility and in that, we'll give you a full overview of what they're, what they do there and everything that they're doing and why the request for the expansion and we can get into the, into the discussion of the future at that point. But for now, we, we need to move forward so that we keep the criminal justice system supplied with the expertise and information they need, so.
It seems like an important, an important number for us to consider from my perspective. Any other comments? Okay, Rusty, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we'll be moving to highways on page 162, the CDL Program Manager. Jim Weber is here.
Okay, so Jim Weber, Deputy Director of Public Works. This one is a CDL Program Manager. CDL is a commercial driver's license. So in 2016, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration had put out new regulations that require entry-level drivers to complete a prescribed program that includes theory and behind-the-wheel instruction. And that training has to be provided by some entity that's listed in their training provider registry. And they can't take a test for a CDL, a skills test, until they've completed that training. And if you're trying to upgrade from a Class B to a Class A, same thing, you have to have training and be able to provide that certification. So so we're requesting the addition of a full-time CDL Program Manager to ensure that we're able to fill our equipment operator positions. And we'd just like to consider this following, the bullet points pretty well covered, this kind of lays out the rationale that we're using. We've got about 80 positions that do require CDL. Normal year, we're hiring about 20 operators a year. Most of the new hires do not. Most of the new hires do not have a CDL at the time of hire, so we're training them in-house with our supervisors, doing the best we can. We're estimating that private sector training would cost about $4,000 per person, so at 20, that's about $80,000 a year for training if we were going to pay for it. We do have a low wage. These drivers are coming in at $25,000 a year. We don't think many of them will spend $4,000 to get the training. Local governments are eligible to create in-house training programs, and an in-house program would be less expensive than contracting for a private sector training and provide some benefits. We'd be able to totally control the quality of the program, and we'd have the ability to deliver some other standardized training on our equipment or, you know, whatever we want to include in the program while they're doing it. We could, in the future, look at a cooperative training agreement with other local governments to provide the services that would help defray the cost of the program for us. And just so you'll know, we need to start, new drivers to get a licensed test would have to have the training before, starting on February 7th of 2021, I'm sorry, that's wrong, '22. So we're asking for one FTE, but we just need it for six months and next year to get this program wrapped up and started for 2021. The impact would be about $38,000, and in '22, that turned into about $75,000. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Does the commission have any questions on this?
No.
Yeah, I guess I have one. So, it sounds to me like you're hiring these drivers without the training they need, given the training, we provide the training through this program, but we're hiring them about $1,250 per hour as their starting wage?
That's probably about right, yes, for the EO1, Sec. 110. We normally are hiring in on the lowest level, but our highest level isn't that much higher, so.
If you, okay, is this a one-time training? They don't have to do this recurring?
They would do a training to get to Class B, which is what most of our people need. And then if we were to take somebody and train them up to the, like the EO3, I think, requires a Class A, so we'd take them back through whatever training they need to get up to the Class A.
I guess what I'm getting to, for about $80,000 a year for 20 people, you could change that wage from $1,250 to $1,450 per hour. I was wondering at $1,450 per hour, if you could hire people with a CDL versus hiring people at $1,250 per hour and getting them a CDL? Just a question.
I'm not sure that math works out right, but that's for one year, and so this is a, once we get them in, if we can keep them, you know, it's a, I mean, I'd love to raise the wage rate, I guess, but.
Again, I'm just saying, you know, if we're going to spend $80,000 for 20 people, it seems like you could either put that in their wages and increase their qualifications.
But we'd have to increase the wage across the board. This is just people, this 20 is people coming into the system. We have 80 in the system.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
I understand you have 80 in the system. You're asking for a FTE, a full-time person to do this training. Is that a full-time job, or can they do other things too? Will they be out running a truck when we're trying to move snow, or will?
Oh, it probably would be. I mean, they'd be, one of the, one of the things we're looking at would be other training programs, you know, we, you've been out to our fall training, you know, we have a spring training, so this is a person that we would use for the CDL purpose, but also use for other training programs we need to run. And, you know, when we go to snow, this would be someone that would carry a CDL that could be used in the field for those snow operations, snow and ice operations, or whatever we might need, but it's just, it's pretty important. We can get people trained at this point, but we can't provide the training they'll need after the regulation kicks in. And so between now and then, we'll make it work, but we're going to need this, you know, by the first part of '22, we're going to need to have something in place, or we're going to have to probably find a private sector provider that we're going to pay to do it.
I understand. My, the only reason I asked the question was because it's a full-time position you're asking for, and whether or not that you need someone full-time to do this, or if they can start filling other jobs so that we don't end up having to use, add you another FTE someplace else.
Again, we, we'll use them as we need them and can use them.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I don't see any other questions.
Our final decision package will be from the Health Department on page 165 for an epidemiologist's position.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a request for an epidemiologist to be added to the Health Department staffing table. The projected cost on that position is $80,438. The intent of that position, epidemiologist performing a number of different functions, disease investigation, they do, also do a great deal of data analysis for us, and adding an additional epidemiologist would give us more disease investigation capabilities and allow us to do more of the data analysis that we know that we need to do, that we just haven't been able to do in the past. And my recollection is that as we went through decision packages for the current year, the 2020 budget in 2019, this was one of the very last things that we cut off the list, and so it's been a need for a number of years. And then, as we've seen in the last few months, the need for epidemiologists has increased dramatically, and so that's the request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Tim, the consistent question is, with the current environment, is this, in 2010, could this be done under the CARES Act eligible for at least part of the salary?
I'm going to let our CFO answer that question.
So, yes, if, for the 40-some positions that have already been added, I do believe some epidemiologist's work is being done, and so that is already being covered. That was part of the approval process that you all had a couple.
Oh, that's right.
I don't know if there's any others that are coming, but yes, those are absolutely clearly CARES Act eligible.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
But those, those are temp positions that are set to expire at the end of December, and this is for a full-time.
Thank you for reminding. Commissioner Dennis?
Tim, we just did a grant here in the last month or so. Wasn't an epidemiologist in that?
There, that was some state funding, and we did receive some additional funding there. We're short on epidemiologists, and so.
So this is above and beyond that grant that we just approved?
This would be above and beyond that, yes.
So how many epidemiologists are you going to have on this all over?
Well, we would have four full-time at that point in time, two that would be state-funded, and this would make a second locally-funded one.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. But, Tim, didn't, so we're hiring epidemiologists with the CARES money that will only work with coronavirus. Is there a big pool of epidemiologists in our community looking for jobs, or are we kind of bidding against ourselves on trying to hire people? And could we maybe transition one of the part-time people we're hiring, once they're done through the coronavirus, you know, at least through the peak right now, hire one of them or keep them on full-time and do it at that point?
Absolutely. I think that's the strategy that we would use to fill this position, where this position added to the staffing table.
Until?
Yeah, this is a 2021 request, and so, yeah. Timing-wise, it seems like it would work out perfectly. If we add this position at the beginning of 2021, we'd have a pool of our temp folks to pick from.
But I guess that's assuming that there won't be any COVID-19 outbreaks coming into, you know, winter of 2020 into, you know, early 2021, and at that point, we'll have to look at our funding, and if we're able to extend those, I think there's some variables we don't know.
Without question, yeah. And part of the thought process on the, those temp positions lasting through '12, '13 is that's when the CARE, right now, the CARES funding, funding needs to be expended by then, but I agree with you 100%.
But if we're able to get that money extended, which is likely, some of it, this job won't be ready then for January of 2021. If you're going to take one of those people that are funded by the coronavirus, by the CARES money.
Well, we'll recruit, and hopefully we'll have a candidate to fill this, and then long-term, there's just a need for additional full-time EPIs and.
I agree. I'm just wondering if we cannot wait until we run the course with the CARES money, because we don't know if that's going to be able to be extended or not, especially with epidemiologists, because from all indicators that you've talked about, there's going to be other waves of coronavirus coming through.
Certainly would be an option. As I indicated, you know, we've, we've had this need for a while, and we've been working through not having the position, so if that was a choice.
I understand. I just feel like our focus has been on coronavirus, hiring those epidemiologists. I just don't know at what point we're going to run out of the pool of people to hire for that. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't believe so. Thank you, Tim.
Missures, that was the last of the decision package requests. As the manager mentioned at the beginning, we do have some external agency funding information that was provided to you, and Carly Sanchez, our principal budget analyst, is here to walk through that information.
And this is the extra information that was on our table?
Yes.
It's not in the big Bible?
Correct.
I think we do have an updated version of the table that we're passing out, right? So maybe there was an earlier version that was emailed.
Yes, this is, has a few minor updates, and then I will speak about sending a detailed chart later today. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Carly Sanchez with the Budget Office. I'm here today to present quickly some information regarding Cedric County's funding to outside organizations. If you've referenced the chart titled Historical Summary of Cedric County Funding to Outside Organizations, which is the one that Erin just handed out, the updated version, this provides actual funding amounts for 2017, excuse me, through 2019, the budgeted funding amount for 2020, and the forecasted amount for 2021. And as a reminder, the forecast is a plan, and the same information for 2021 was presented during the forecast presentation at budget hearings earlier this month. I do want to point out that the amounts provided here for Exploration Place and Cedric County Zoo are contractual amounts only and do not include staff costs. Now, if you'll refer to the second document that you have, which is the, looks like the paper, titled Funding to Community Partners, it gives a brief overview of each outside organization the county is budgeted to provide funding to in 2020. If you turn to page four of the document, the chart shows each organization's total 2020 operating budget, the total county contribution for 2020, and then what percent the county's contribution is of that organization's operating budget. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions on the charts, and Tim Kaufman is also here to answer any questions you might have, and I'll also be sending out a more detailed historical summary chart today. Thank you.
Okay, Carly, I have a question.
Yes.
The summary, historical summary, very helpful, especially for, for me, not being here in previous years. So in 19, last year, I recall we, we did a 29,000 or something like that crisis, Women's Crisis Center?
And this is updated, if you go towards the bottom, it's going to be under the Community Development, Community Program section. It would be the chart that Erin just handed out. It's updated to include that.
Oh, okay. Is there anything else on the new chart that was not on the?
There's no new organizations added, but I do plan to update this with more in-depth detail and send it out later today.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Well, thank you, that was, okay, so the significant impacts are Cedric County Zoo, that budget decrease, and slightly in the Exploration Place. Is that the, is the Exploration Place, that's a contractual amount?
Yes.
But is that, was that from their, was that negotiation between you and, and the new management at Exploration Place?
The way Exploration Place is done is there's a set funding amount every year, which I believe is $2,220,000, $140,000. And how that's done is, whatever the salary amount is for the president, which I believe is Adam now, we pay that amount as salary, and whatever's left over of that overall amount is then awarded to them as a contractual amount. And I think it's paid out twice a year.
And it is, Commissioners, done through a funding agreement that was negotiated, but it was last negotiated, I believe, a year or two ago, and so it was, it predates Adam Smith coming to Exploration Place.
Okay.
It's a five-year agreement that I think extends through 2022.
So for purposes of getting that on the record, I'm going to repeat what you just said, and that is, that was a five-year funding agreement that runs through 2022, and so at that point, it would be renegotiated.
Okay, so historically, looking at this, again, your historic summary, there are some one-time, one-time things that happen, not, not a lot, but a few every year that kind of pop up. Historically, have those been ones that have just been approached at us during the year, such as what we did with the Family Crisis Center, or has they traditionally been something that, I know that manager, we've talked about, somebody approaches and says, "Well, we're not this year, but we'll put it in the proposal for next year." Historically, what, is it a both?
So if you go way back.
Emergency ask or planned ask? I guess is the easier way.
If you go way back, we would have tried to have put those through the budget process as much as possible. A few years ago, we were in a good financial position, and so it allowed for more of those kind of ad hoc requests to come up, and so those are, have been, and Tom can talk about how he receives any requests, but certainly most of those come either through you all or through him to us for that analysis that Brent Shelton has been performing the last few years for you.
Okay.
And just pre-COVID, we had, we had discussed at the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, the concept of policy to help give guidance to the manager's office and the commission on how these would be processed, and that has kind of got caught up in the, in the COVID issue. That's probably something we'll have to go back and still address. I will tell you that for 2021, as requests are coming in, I'm pretty much telling entities that the commission has enough challenges already, just managing and cutting the existing budget. I don't see how we could possibly, and I think everybody understands that everybody gets it, at least in general budget, and then the conversation steers toward CARES money and those other types of things which we'll work through, but at some point in time, we'll still, I think it's good policy for the county to have some type of way to address these kinds of asks.
Yeah, that's good. I'm aware of one, a couple of requests, one of them being in the tune of about $15,000, and you've advised them that we're going to, we need to pass, and I re-talked to them, and everybody, everybody gets it, like you're saying, so that's, the other one I might just, from my perspective, point out is, I'm okay with zeroing out the nonprofit chamber, but maybe providing something to them, but I do have some, thanks for the, I did read the historical write-up. It looks like this was intended to have been phased out originally, years ago, and years ago, originally set up, and then, so my question, I don't mind helping that a little bit, maybe, I don't know, a number, but, but I'd like to visit further maybe with, because I have some serious questions about, well, just to be, to be honest, I don't know if the 195 individuals or companies, if they are also receiving money through, like United Way, and that we're already contributing individually to, if this is, but there might be some others that are getting United Way money as well. I know the, I just don't know the mission, I don't understand their mission very well, and the leadership there is also, as a member of the Planning Commission, and, and there's been some activity on the Planning Commission that the leader has, has supported more of a anti-growth or a non-business development environment. And so I would like to, I don't know if there's a conflict with, with the leadership position there and what their mission is, is nonprofit share. I wouldn't mind keeping that one at, at the zero level, but maybe add something to it, but I'd like to visit directly with, with either the board or the leadership, just to further understand why this has been ongoing when its original intent was, was to be phased out. I thought maybe phased out recently. I didn't realize it was originally to phase out back in '05, and then '10, and whatever. So that's just my comment from. So that's just my comment from, uh, from looking at the, it's not a whole lot of money. I understand it, but it, it's more about the, it's more about the, the mission and the, than the results and, and what's going on there, from, from my perspective. Uh, the other ones, I see what we've done and it seems, I guess the 10,000 to River Festival, is that just didn't happen in this year? So it's just rolled over to next year? Is that a 10,000 savings? Or did we still spend that? It's okay if we did, I just was wondering.
We'll let Tim take that question.
We haven't spent it yet. Um, we are, they have contacted us, us with a couple of different options. I think they're still trying to figure out what they're doing. I saw something earlier today that they're doing a virtual event. And so it's entirely possible that we won't have a way to participate with them this year, but we've still got that in the current budget in case there is something that we can do that would benefit the county. But we don't intend to increase in 2021.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. And with the Cedric County Fair being canceled this year, what's that update? Assume it's similar to the update on River Festival?
With that particular contract, we pay them at the beginning of the year and when they invoice us. And so we've paid that out. We're still not sure what their intent is. I think there's, I'm not 100% sure that they've decided to not do anything. And so we'll follow up with them to see if we need to recapture that.
Or apply it to. Sure.
Okay.
What's the $5,000 miscellaneous allocations? Carly, can you address that?
Where's that?
Under miscellaneous allocations?
That's what I will send out when I send out a detailed, um, chart later today. I'll break that out for you so you know what those are, what those allocations went to.
Are they multiple things, Carly, multiple entities?
I think so. Um, I went through and looked at contingency tracking and I think, um, we had one that was a sponsorship to the NBC World Series. So it's things like that. Um, they were just kind of lumped together, but I plan to do, do that by line item so you know exactly what those are.
So all the tables that we buy in support of fundraisers around the community, where is that coming out of? Is that coming out of the BOCC contingency fund?
Either their manager's budget, yeah.
Okay. And so, you know, when we talk about outside organizations, will that be something that's addressed as well?
It can be.
Well, we get a lot of requests from multiple, I mean, in a normal year, right? When people are, you know, having fundraisers. You know, I wonder if, if one commissioner gets it, but the whole commission doesn't want to do it, how are we going to be fair and equitable for every single nonprofit that comes our way that wants us to buy a table?
I, I think it could definitely be part of the policy. The way we handle it now is 95% of the time, you guys all get invited to things together. And then generally what I'll do is walk the halls. If a majority of you want to go, we acquire the table, take it out of BOCC contingency or manager's funding. On occasion where one or two of you wanted to go to something, we'd go down and buy individual tickets, taking it from that same funding mechanism. I, I think it's good policy to have the commission as a body make decisions on tables. I think it could be part of the policy, but it is something we'll talk about.
So as far as the Community Development, Community, uh, those programs, you know, we had, how are we going to communicate to the community at large so that we don't get those one-offs?
I think.
Is that the policy that you're, that we're going to craft?
Yes, that has, that should be the policy that we craft. And let me back up. The list of things on here that are, we recidivistically continue to fund, I think the commission at any time could, and many of these entities already come into the podium once a year and report out to you all. CAC, for example, Diana Shun comes in frequently and talks about what the CAC is doing and will ask questions. As you go through this list, those that we fund year in and year out, they come in. And the commission at any time can bring those people in and have them account for what they're doing with the people's money. The one-offs, um, as we move forward, I think have to be policy-driven. And I think once the policy is established, we market that out. And it gives us, that was part of the reason I wanted this to go toward a policy because it gives a clear, consistent message to the community. We haven't had a chance to draft that policy yet because we've been sidetracked with COVID, but we come back to that. And the commission has some policy decisions to make right off the bat on that. For example, do we fund a certain amount of money every year that pools that? Or do, do we handle them ad hoc through requests? And then the, the board hears it in a public meeting? Those are the types of issues we'll have to policy through and then market it out to the community so they know what the expectation is.
So when to request, how to request?
Yes, yes. It'll all be part of the policy.
Is there a date that we could possibly shoot for that we, I mean, even if it's three, four months from now? I mean, I hate to just keep this lingering and then it never gets accomplished. I mean, can we get it on the calendar?
Yes, I'll, I'll put it on a staff calendar for us. I don't think it'll take three or four months. I, I will have to go back into my archives. I think I've already got a template drafted and then it just, it got put into what we call the hold pile. So, but I'll, I'll get you something ASAP and it'll be faster than three or four months.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Cruz gave you a very low bar to have to get over, so.
I want to make people successful.
I know, and I would agree that, uh, I understand historically there's been not a lot, but, but this last year, 19, did have quite a few requests coming at us.
We seem to have a lot at the end of the year, Chairman.
Yeah, it seemed like from, from you that have been around here a few years, it, it did seem a little more and a little overwhelming for Commissioner Cruz and myself to, to keep getting that. So some kind of a, I, I would agree. Let's craft something and I think a majority of agreement would be, would be something that, that we could agree on. If somebody doesn't like it, that three or four, three or four like it, then, and maybe there's a number in there for how much cap per, for a event or a table or whatever. But I do agree, I think it's very important that we as commissioners are seeing and participate in a number of events. Some are events that, that the individual commissioner really wants to be at and some are events where we feel obligated to be at. So, uh, but it is important for, for us in the community to, to, to have to still consider all these asks that come our way. So thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for bringing that up to, so. I don't think a policy would be too much to get. I'm not sure if the city even has one, but maybe there's one you can cut and paste from, copy, paste, whatever. Okay. All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carly. Okay.
And that's all we had for today?
I just have one final thing. So on the CARES, um, the outline that you gave us as far as understanding, you know, the, um, the notice of funding opportunity, the call today at 4:00, the, um, approval on Wednesday, and then the length of time to where people have to apply. And then is that kind of calendared out so that the community can kind of expect when it will be available, how long they'll have, when's the first stimulus review meeting? So we, we don't have the details on that last part, the federal, when we will have that first meeting in terms of reviewing stuff? They are, I believe, having a call tomorrow morning, uh, either today or tomorrow morning, but that Brent has scheduled with that team to kind of give them a heads up on the training that they'll have and that whole process. We do have the timeline that Tony made pretty for us that I think Tom shared maybe last week. Sorry, the days are folding over. But we can maybe work to get that posted out on the website and pushed out. It does have an estimated timeframe for all of those different things. And it takes us all the way into next calendar year. So we can certainly make that available if that's useful. Yep. Thank you.
Great. Any other, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. So I, I'm curious, Mr. Manager, when you first talked, started talking about the county, the very beginning of our budget hearings, you mentioned 80 decision packages. Is that what this is or is that something in addition to what this is?
I think I mentioned at the beginning that we had several dozen decision packages and that the leadership team had met numerous times and culled those down. And the list you saw today was a part of that 80. But these were the ones that we as a staff struggled with because had we cut them, organizationally it could impact us. And I felt those were of magnitude that had to come back to this commission for input. That's what you saw today, sir. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, Commissioners, thank you. Yesterday was a, was a large day for all of us and a, a large day for the impact on the community. And you all had some extreme thinking processes and emotions and, and everything else. And ended the day with, with still things. So that, yesterday was, was a, a very burdensome day for us all as commissioners. And I appreciate that you're able to wake up today and, and have your mind ready for the, the business of the county, which is budget and, and critical items. And so I, I just want my, just kind of my personal thanks to you commissioners for being able to, to refocus. And I think the, and I want the community to know that we're still, uh, we're still working on the business of Cedric County, trying to provide the best services we can to the cities and to our residents. And thank you to the Finance Committee for your guidance and your help in helping answer all of our questions. So without any other comments, we will adjourn for the day. Have a good day.